Go ahead, whenever you're ready.
Okay, welcome to the regular meeting, or special meeting of council of June the 8th, 2021, at 4:40 PM. A meeting called and ordered, through the moment of silence. And number two, approval of the agenda.
Approved by Rick Owen, seconded by Patrick Adams. It resolved that the agenda for the special meeting of council held on June 8th, 2021, beginning at 4:40 PM. Be approved as circulated to all members of council with the removal of closed session.
Approved. Motion carried. And the declaration of pecuniary interest. None noted. Reports of municipal officers and communications proposed 2021 budget interim CEO Don Stedholm. With the way gone.
Okay, so this is the, our last meeting in regards to our budget. So I just wanted to go over everything with you one last time, make sure that we have every, you guys have recommended or suggested. So next Tuesday, the 15th is when we'll pass the public session of, of the budget. And, and get it approved so that we can start sending out the lovely tax bills and so on and so forth to our, our residents in regards to where we're standing. So right at the moment, you've all received these sheets, which is your community services sheets. They're all tarred in there. There is one change, I don't know how that got in there, but anyways, on your last sheet, or your second last sheet, there's total town operating. And under 2020 budget, they got 9,835,000, which is incorrect. It should be 17,523,625. So that brings that up and, and helps to make the comparison between 220 budget and 221 budget fairly reasonable. So I think we've gone through these enough. You have both the 2021 budget, the 2020 actual and the 2021, or the 2020 budget and all their corresponding numbers. So does anybody have any comments in regards to those?
Counselor Owen.
Rick, you're muted.
There. My neighbor was using his chainsaw, so I didn't want you to hear it. I just want to go over some numbers. Heritage North. Now unless there's something unforeseen happen, we're only operating that for half the year this year. And yet in the expenditures, labor and related, we've got that at 84,605, whereas last year it was 98,517 for the whole year. So I'm not sure how that was. Utilities, we have a 29,300.
Did you guess each one of every point you mentioned?
Okay, I can stop after each one or just go through the Heritage North.
Well, I think you're probably gonna get the same answer for all of them. So the labor, the labor and related for expenditures for Heritage North is because, what's the lady that works there? Peggy? Cause Peggy is going to eventually come over to the works department and her dollars are going to be used in the works department. So instead of taking half the money out of there, putting half the money over there and getting people even more confused, we just left it in Heritage North and it will be shifted over along with, I'm sure, a couple of other comments that you're going to be making in regards to Heritage North to ensure that we're gonna have a, the Heritage North is going to be operating until the mid-July. And then we'll be moving a lot of those costs and expenditures over to physical services.
Okay, well, utilities, utilities, last year was 30,245. For a half year, we have 29,300.
Yes.
I don't see how that figure adds up.
Well, it probably...
Almost the same for six months as it was for 12.
Yep, and that's why I asked you last week if there was any other changes you guys wanted to make to these and you all voted no, you were fine with it, and we left at that. So anyways, go ahead.
Well, I'm a counselor and I, and I've had more time to study it and I have questions that I'd like answered. That's within my...
If I can't answer next week, then I guess we're not passing the budget till July then.
Well, if that's what it takes to get the right answers, then that's what it takes. You know, but I'm, I'm spending other people's money here and I'm being very careful that I fully understand what I'm spending on and that the numbers make sense.
All right.
So if I had time to study this this week and I found some things that I didn't fast week, I'm gonna ask about them.
Okay, awesome.
Normally the treasurer would be in the room to explain all this.
Well, right at the moment, I'm your treasurer, so...
Well, we have a deputy treasurer who actually does the books, so the deputy treasurer should be there to explain these discrepancies.
Yes, he does half the books and Sherry does the other half of the books.
Well...
Anyways, keep firing away. I've got both of those circled.
Administration and other. Full year last year, $23,001. Half year this year, $27,380.
Yes.
Doesn't add up.
Yes, it does add up, but that's okay. You want me to explain it to you right now or not?
If you can, yes.
Yes, well, with administration, you're closing off hockey Heritage North, so you're letting people go that are not receiving their full wage, so you gotta cut them off and you gotta pay them a severance pay. So of course the administration costs are going to be higher this year than it was in previous year because you're paying people a severance pay to say, thanks for all your work, now you're leaving.
Okay, how many employees are we severing?
I can't really tell you. I'll tell you, three, how's that?
Well, I'd like an accurate answer. I mean, I'm not here to fool around. I want real answers.
I'm telling you, that's the reason why there is, there's an increase.
Okay. If we move on to childcare.
Okay, childcare, yes.
Administration and other. Last year it was $14,664. This year it's $2,910. I don't understand the big difference. I'm not complaining it's going in the right direction, but I don't understand...
I can't really explain that either, but the 2910 is a budget finger, figure. It's not an actual figure. If you looked at 2020, 2020, their budget figures was 6,500, but it went up to 14,664.
Yeah.
I wasn't here, counselor was, so I'm assuming...
6,500.
Going on.
6,500, it's a lot more than $2,910 too, so...
Yes, it is.
I don't understand the thing there.
Well, the one that I don't understand is the 14,664. Which is your actual...
I don't understand that number either.
Yep.
Emily, go ahead.
Thank you, worship to you to council. The big difference there is that we had an insurance claim and we had to pay a $10,000 deductible. So the large increase in the 2020, it's $10,000 for the deductible. When you take the $10,000 off, you'd be left with 4,664. And we, we brought that down a little bit just because we don't have some of the admin costs, including lawyer's fees, because we no longer operate. So even in 2020, we were still finishing a couple of outstanding legal situations and they are now complete.
Okay, thank you. If we go to the building department. Labor and related, last year was 150...
Development Services or Public Works?
Eh?
You talking about development services or Public Works?
Well, it says building. So I assume it's public.
Development Services then, okay.
Okay, on, on the building, last year labor was 153,220. This year it's dropped to 119,039, which I like, but I just like to understand how we achieved that.
I'm trying to tune in, please bear with me. There we go.
I, I think, Rick, they're contracting the building inspector services from another community. Uh, thank you. I notice they have a contractor below that. They're contracting it because Vic Berchenko has been off. He's been off on disability, I believe, so I think he's, they're contracting it from, I'm not sure where he's from, but he's not from town.
The city of London.
There you go.
Okay, is that what you were gonna say, Mr. Haas?
In bits and pieces, yes.
Okay. Did you have anything else to add? Is there...
No.
Any other magic in there?
But, no, I think I'll just bear with silence. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then when we go down to materials and supplies, last year was 2,551 and this year it's up to 5,800. So...
Down from 9,100, which was the budget in 2020, or the actual in 2019, which is 12,000. So you gotta remember, these are budget figures. These are figures we're guessing at. So we're not telling you these are your actual figures. Materials and supplies could come in at 2,000. And are you gonna come back and say, oh, well, and you had budget for 5,800, so how come you didn't spend 5,800?
Well, we're basing our tax rate on your guesses, so that's why I'm asking questions because I want to try and get answers.
Yes.
So that we can make an educated decision.
Actually, we went through that, sorry, through you, your worship to council. It's my first time doing the budgets for this department, so I was asking you into the same questions that you were. And if I found an answer that perhaps belonged in another category better, and that's where you would be tracking it in a reasonable fashion, I would move it there. If we're already six months into the year, or four months into the year at that point, and I saw that perhaps it wasn't an appropriate number to put, that reflected that timeline, I would change it at that point too. So you're seeing in a lot of these adjustments, that kind of movement going around.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor, I have one.
Yeah, Don, I, I know that we agreed to take a couple of capital items out of there. One of them was a backhoe and we were gonna put that, a half lot of money into reserve. I know it's off the table, but I just want to make sure that we don't come back next year and I know we're gonna be looking for that, whatever it is, 150,000 to, to buy a, a backhoe, or 175,000, I think it was. And we say, you know, we, we're gonna forget that we actually put half of that money away this year. I'd like to see it somehow earmarked in our budget so we know that that money was a two-year investment to buy a, a backhoe. And, you know, whoever's doing the budget next year, he doesn't have to explain that it's a $175,000 for a backhoe and we, yeah, was it a 2008 or 09 backhoe that we currently have operating?
2010 and 2006.
Yeah, or 2006, yeah. I just, you know, I, I'd like it marked somehow on the, on the budget so it shows up next year that we've actually reserved some of that money from this year's budget to, to buy that backhoe.
And we have done that.
Okay, I just didn't see it on the, I just didn't see earmarked here on the...
Yeah, no, it's earmarked. And I'll just tell you that, you know, while we spent on repairs on our two backhoes, we make that 175,000 look like a good investment, but I took your advice and we've done what council has directed us to do, which is take half and put it into a reserve for this year and purchase one backhoe next year, which can turn out to be a good investment, but maybe it doesn't turn out to be a good investment, but we'll find out. Both backhoes were in the grass last week, I believe. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Me? Oh, no. I got a half hour presentation here, but if it keeps stopping, we'll be here till 7:00, so. Okay, you have any other questions in regards to the, the payment? Rick was going around, I'm just, you have other questions or comments? So I might as well hear them now. Okay, not seeing any hands up, so... So anyways, that's what we've done in regards to our, our expenditures. And, you know, and like I said, when you're trying to budget something, you are doing that. You are putting in a figure that you think will be fairly accurate, but you got no guarantee that it is going to be accurate. And you hope that between staff and, and the people that we work with, that they're going to be as, trying to be as accurate as we possibly can, so. Anyways, okay, so that was that. Next thing we talked about was our capital plan. So in here you have two sheets of capital plans. You have one for our general units, which are things such as your community services, fire, admin, TPR, and development. And so those came to a total of 554,534. And we're hoping that, because we're still waiting to get some notification on funding, especially under MIS, that we can reduce that cost to a smaller amount and reducing the cost impact to the taxpayer. However, I can't bet on that. I can't tell you that's what we're going to do, but that's what we're hoping will come. Right at the moment, it's 554 and 534. And on top of that, we have to add 34,777 out of the Public Works capital budget. So by doing that, you're looking at somewhere around $590,000 for, for levy reserve. And a lot of that is coming, no, I shouldn't say a lot, but a portion of that is coming out of the, out of reserves, so, but the bigger portion of that is coming out of your tax levy. Your capital projects for Public Works, so we've gone through this. The 175 for the new backhoe and the 50,000 for the new half ton truck. That money, money has been taken out of that and we have put 112,500 into reserve for backhoe and a truck. Cause that was the direction we got from everybody last week. So we're correct with that, where we made a correct assumption in that then? Okay? So that, those are your, your reserves or your capitals, I should say. And then, the one thing that you're going to be happy about is that we've, at the end of 2020, because we didn't do the one reserve that we usually do, or the one resolution that we usually do at the end of the year to transfer unused 2020 dollars into 2021 budget, we've coming out with a surplus of just a little over $3 million that we can use in our 2021 budget. Okay? So that is a positive. Now what we've done, and you'll have a, a motion coming forward in regards to it, we're going to take 1.1 million, I'm rough, I'm roughing these out. If you want me to put the exact figures, I'll do that, but roughly 1.2 million, let's say, into a tax stabilization reserve, 540,000 into reserve for working funds, 36,000 in reserve for infrastructure capital, 5,700 into reserve fund for library purposes and 3820 for reserve for library purposes. And then that still leaves 1.3 million dollars. And what we'll do is we'll take half of that and put it in reserve for working funds and the other half to reduce the 2021 tax levy request. So is everybody fine with that or have comments in regards to that?
Counselor Adams?
Yeah, I'm very happy with that. That's excellent work, Don, to be able to divide. We hit most of our mandates by having reserves, being able to be funded and even further reduce the levy burden on the ratepayers. So excellent work, Don, and staff on proposing that. I'm in favor.
Okay, that's, I just comment, Don. It's a compliment to our, our staff because in my six years here, I've never seen a surplus of $3 million.
Well, yeah, that's because before you would have passed that more.
But still, it's a, it's a nice surprise. As Counselor Adams says, it's gonna make up a big difference for this year's tax levy. Keep it down. Okay, we're fine with that. The other thing that I, I need to talk about too is our reserves and reserve funds. You would have received sheets in regards to that. So, you know, your reserves, you're looking at 5.6 million as of the end of, well, as of now for 2021. That includes the money that we're supposedly taking out for our capital projects, which is a, a little increase of roughly about $2 million. You have your reserve funds, which are at 2.6, which is roughly a $5 million or $500,000 decrease from 2021, or 2020, I should say. And then your last thing, which is your gas tax and your OCIF, your gas tax have gone up by roughly about 700,000 and your OCIF has gone down by roughly 1.5 million. And the reason for that is because we're using them on our capital projects and we're trying to max out the amount of money that we can put in there and continue to do as many capital projects as we're planning to do this year. So the only problem that we're facing is that it's now mid-January and so our works department people are gonna have to get moving as well as our other areas such as community services and, and MIS and admin. So because those are big dollars that we have to, have to spend if we're going to max out our capital as much as we can. And then lastly, is the part that we all like to hear. So I just want to let you know that we have looked at our tax levy for, for this coming year. Our tax levy, I'm not going to give you exact figures because I don't want to release these until next week with the capital, with the introduction to the public in regards to these. But everything that we're looking at is that we're looking at a reduction in our tax levy for every individual in Kirtland Lake. So you guys haven't had that since you've been here, but you do have it this year. So we're trying to, you know, what we looked at, we looked at a $100,000 house and you're looking at approximately a $200 reduction in their tax rate in regards to that aspect. So, you know, I've, I've had CJKL and I've had Northern News try to get these figures out of me and I've been holding on to them because, well, holding on, I just got them yesterday. But the thing is, is that, you know, I'm gonna hold on to them till next Tuesday and release them with the council meeting that we're gonna have that releases the, the budget in its entirety to the public in regards to where we're going, how we got there and what are we trying to accomplish with this budget. So, you know, overall, you know, what has helped us get there is the 3 million bonus from 2020. Because if we didn't have that 3 million dollar bonus, we wouldn't be sitting here putting smiles on people's faces in regards to the, to the budget. So, you know, we're trying to do the best that we can. What I'll also introduce next week is, you know, comparison between 2020 and 2021 so that people can see, you know, where the difference is made, what caused that difference and why are we at the point where we're at? So, you know, that's where we're at in regards to our budget. I'm overly happy with the budget, you know. Peter and especially Sherry has been very helpful to us in preparing the budget and, you know, in getting these figures to where we need it. You know, we called in Ryan at the end and he ran through all this through OTDA and got all our figures through OTDA, which is very important for us. And, you know, so overall, you know, we're quite pleased with how the budget turned out for, for this year. Now, you know, next year, you're gonna have another little challenge in regards to setting your taxes and so on and so forth, so you probably won't have a reduction next year, but if you can come in some, someplace around zero or somewhere around there, I think you're doing fairly good. So, you know, I just like to thank everybody that gave me a hand in putting this together and I'll thank them again next week when I do my final public presentation in regards to the budget.
Counselor Adams?
Excellent work again, team. That's fantastic. I look forward to seeing Don a part of our team right through summer now.
You may even get a laugh out of me, see that?
Yeah, hi. Well, I'm also very happy about this budget. Anytime we see a reduction in tax levies, really a good thing for our community. One of the things that I, when I go around, people do want to bill in Kirtland Lake because this, this, they will say that our taxes are too high. So I guess this is a process in trying to get the, the taxes done. I'm very happy about this. And thanks to all the staff that put this together. But the, the question that I have is, maybe it is a comment. Now, look at the capital. I see that the, the reserve, it transferred to reserve for infrastructure is a little bit small. It's very small compared to that one for working funds. I don't know why is that? I thought that would be putting more into infrastructure capital as opposed to the working funds. This is what you break down, you have on page, was that, well, when you're essentially slicing down the 3 million surplus, so I see that, that transfer to, to reserve for infrastructure capital is only 36. And of course, there's another transfer again, the transfer that you have to the working funds is, is, is more than that. Is there any particular reason for that? Shouldn't we be, shouldn't we be transferring more into the reserve for the infrastructure capital? Thank you.
Yeah, you'll see there where it says onsped 2020 safe restart funding. Safe restart funding was COVID funding that we got from the province in regards to dealing with COVID. We spent anywhere from 27,000 to 28,000, somewhere in that ballpark, buying PPE. The remaining of that is 540,000 and the province directed that we had to put that money into a reserve for working funds or any, it came in the future in regards to COVID.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, Don, I know we're going to thank the staff next week, but since I've been back fourteen, fifteen years, I've never seen a decrease that I can recall, so. This is especially timely during COVID, because a lot of businesses and and citizens have had had to adjust quite drastically to make ends meet, so. I'm sure this will be well received by the community. So, thanks for all your efforts. Any other comments or questions?
We have two motions for this item. So the first motion is moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff, be it resolved that the proposed twenty-twenty-one budget documents be received, and that staff be directed to provide the appropriate notice for the passing of the budget at the June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one regular meeting of council.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Stacy White, be it resolved that council hereby approves the following transfers of the twenty-twenty operating surplus of three million, sixty-three thousand and nine dollars. One million, one sixty-one thousand into a tax stabilization reserve, five hundred and forty thousand, nine ninety into the reserve for working capital, thirty-six thousand into the reserve for infrastructure capital, or five thousand, seven hundred and nine into a reserve fund for library purposes, three thousand, eight hundred and twenty into a reserve for library purposes, six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-five into the reserve for working capital, and the remaining six hundred, six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-five be utilized to reduce the twenty-twenty-one tax levy request.
Now, you said working capital, you meant working funds.
For which one?
The one above.
Six fifty-seven?
Yeah.
So that should be working funds?
That says should be working funds, not working capital. All in favor? Motion carried. Confirmation by law?
Moved by Stacy White, seconded by Rick Owen. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be read a first, second, and third time, numbered pass signed by the mayor and the clerk, and the sealed corporation be affixed there, too. Bylaw number twenty-one dash zero four four being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held June eighth, twenty-twenty-one.
All in favor? Motion carried. There is no closed meeting required. It's been removed. Motion to adjourn?
Moved by Patrick Adams, seconded by Casey Owens, be it resolved that council adjourn the June eighth, twenty-twenty-one special meeting of council.
All in favor? Motion carried.